Good evening, everyone. Thanks for accommodating us. Normally, we meet at the Education Service Center, but to support social distancing and depending on the number of people who might want to address the Board, we decided to relocate to the Silver Lining Arts Center. So, welcome. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I would ask that our superintendent confirm that this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I'd ask a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. And we have recognition of a retirement, and Mr. Hanson will address us. Thank you.
Members of the Board, thank you for welcoming me today. We get today to recognize Barb Brier tonight and congratulate her on her retirement. Many of you know Barb and many people throughout the district. She has served almost for the past decade as the administrative assistant for our athletics department. She has literally helped thousands of students in that time. She has been with the district for 26 years, in fact, so we are sad to see her go and certainly she's going to be missed, but also want to recognize her for a lot of really committed years to the West Bend School District and, like I said, literally impacted the success of thousands of student athletes in her time. And I know that the Board has a statement that you wanted to read as well.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So, on behalf of the Board, we would like to congratulate Barb Brier on her retirement from the West Bend School District after 26 years of service to our students, staff, and families. Barb has served in many roles and has worked as the administrative assistant for the athletic department since 2011. She's won several awards during her time in the district, including last year winning the Support Staff Member of the Year Award. Barb has been the face of the athletics department for almost a decade. She has supported the success of thousands of student athletes in her time at West Bend. She has transformed many of the processes in the athletic department to make things efficient for parents and students. We are deeply grateful to Barb for all she has done to advance the mission of the West Bend School District for over a quarter century. So certainly, our thanks and our congratulations to her.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. I have not received any comment cards. Is there anyone in this room who wishes to participate in public participation? I'll put on my glasses to make absolutely sure I haven't missed anyone. In the back, there is one?
There is one.
There's one? Excellent. All right. We'll need you to fill out a public comment card, and if you'd step forward, I will read the public participation guidelines at this time. Thank you. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the Board should obtain and complete a public participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the President prior to the meeting or when allowed by the President. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name, address, and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The Board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The Board may refer to the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The Board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response. So I would now invite you forward for public participation. Please.
Well, actually, no, I'm here to listen. We've got some great options for us to hear about as residents, and I'm not sure we're going to decide on them, but once I've heard the options, I'm going to have some questions. At the moment, I'm just here to learn.
Great. Absolutely. Thank you for coming. All right. Excellent. All right, is there anyone else? Anyone else for public participation? All right. Then we'll move on with the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. And in the consent agenda, we have minutes of the July 13, 2020 regular Board meeting, dispersments posted to August 3, 2020, ratification of contracts, resignations, and retirements. Would I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Oops, sorry. Go ahead.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, the motion carries. All right. It's come to the superintendent's report, and I'm very pleased that we were able to dedicate the majority, really, of our time to it because clearly this is something that is of great importance and great interest to the community. So I will welcome to the podium our Superintendent Jen Wimmer, who will give us an up-to-date report.
Thank you. So we have a few thoughts on how we're going to do this. Well, I think I would reminisce, I would reminisce about saying our staff, our community, our families, we're planning for living in uncertainty, which is really hard, it is really a long, and sometimes frustrating, and it's something I share. Because we really do the same frustration when it can be easier to just, on a policy day, some things were lending themselves to clarity, which is great, but I think that we continue to just kind of reflect information, the absolute use of the great science, the tools we need, so that families can really have what their, what they're going to look like for person-to-person, for the whole thing, for the whole thing, instructions. The Board has already said that our instruction options, and I see this completely coming down to what does it personally really look like? Because as we've discussed throughout our plan, it's all around providing choices and options, so that families can select what best we need, they really need. Also, we, because of our, we're some of those continuing actions for our staff as well, so certainly whether you're a family or a staff member, an individual health concern or your child, or a community member, et cetera, with that continual options, it's helping us frame the difficult where they would like to be and where they're going to apply. So that's something we really, really use a lot. So I'll just jump in and then follow our process that we have used. So, I have a, the superintendent's, the superintendent's, some of the leaders are deploying, and that's just sort of given us this week, because they started really early, information teams, their, and to change. So I think we're really responding, we've got some preliminary surveys from our families, and then also, we'll certainly get that too, we keep that wide range of continual opportunities for our families to open, we have them putting them in right now, so we have that choice of all, in our plan. So, we've done feedbacks, families, I'm open to comments, please, families, community members, call me, email me, happy to connect with you in any situation, get you connected with the right person if you have questions. Our staff, we had convened a 40-plus group of representatives from across the district to start talking about and processing pieces of information and then guiding our work. We created a presentation from that, and then a good opportunity for all of our families to provide feedback, a wide range of topics, again, to help take that feedback to bring forward the best plan possible. I think the plan that we bring forth needs to be the community's plan, because our whole goal is to keep our students, our staff, and our community healthy so that I can continue to provide that wide range of opportunities for all. And then our students. You saw we had some students speak to the Board, and I continue to work with those students. We're going to be doing some virtual roundtables that actually mimic the ones that we're doing with our families and our staff as well, so I'm really excited about the opportunity to engage with our students. So again, you heard me allude to surveys, planning teams. We've been engaged in professional networks, whether it's Laura working with the instructional team, Andy working with business services, Lenny with HR. Everyone's got a large, vast network behind them for their specialty area. Myself with the superintendents, we've been working nationally and globally. We have a meeting with people from Australia this week to learn and understand from other countries who maybe have gone before us. And so again, keeping a wide, varied professional network so that we're collaborating on our plans and we're sharing opportunities with each other across systems. And then, of course, there's our networking with public health. So we work with our public health officers and our district nurse and our nursing team as we navigate new information and process that. We've devised several planning documents. Our families and staff all received kind of a tight framework. It's about eight pages today with a table of contents for some things that we hear them wondering about. Know that behind that is another 40-page larger document for your virtual sessions. If you sign up this week, we will have a presentation that's narrated that you can access 24/7 from our website. And then if you'd like to attend the upcoming virtual meetings, we're going to do that a little different. Sometimes at the Board meetings, it's kind of standing and not having that interaction. Our virtual meetings will be a brief presentation and then an opportunity to break into virtual small groups. So everyone can have a voice, provide feedback, ask questions, and we can take those pieces of feedback and again, address any clarity that we need to add to our planning. And again, great ideas. I was just talking with a set of parents. They're like, hey, remember the days when you used to help kind of at schools get us connected with carpooling and things like that? What if we have a small group that, you know, some of us are able to stay home and navigate this, and we could be of help in a virtual situation? How can you help us network? So we're talking about the concept of helping our families network. So again, that's why it's really important for us to have multiple feedback sessions and engagement opportunities, because as I said, really, the community's plan will be a stronger plan, and it's one that'll have a wide variety of choice. So when you look at things that we've already done, just, again, we've been talking about this since March. Certainly, we didn't think we'd find ourselves here, but here we are, and we're preparing for it. When you think about the staffing needs, we have added, thanks to the Board approval, was full-time school psychologists in addition, in FTE, your full-time equivalent, that ensures that we have a full-time school psychologist for every single school. Because not only are we going to be in attention to the academics for students when they return, but it's a significant social-emotional development piece when we think about being off for six months and returning to school. So that's going to be really critical. Again, developing relationships and reentry to school, bringing closure to kids, how to understand and navigate kind of new routines, those pieces. So again, we're really thankful to have that additional resource. We're working with our sites to be in attention to supervision of smaller groups of students. So in the past, you might have seen everyone come through one entry point or a larger group at recess. We're staffing in a manner where those group sizes are smaller, so we're working on those allocations. We've added cleaning staff, some technology staff. If you walk through the lobby tonight and had a glimpse in, you can see thousands of Chromebooks. We are proudly going one-to-one for K-12. That deployment will be ready before school starts, so we're waiting to make sure everything arrives. So thank you to our technology team. They've done wonders. So again, that technology staff to support that. We've centralized our enrollment services, so as families are navigating all of these choices, they have a centralized support, so they can call at any time, and instead of having to call schools that, you know, people might be on vacation or they're closed, they have a one-stop shop to help them navigate that. And then, we heard today through our call that Public Health Department will be hiring and assigning contact tracing staff to our districts, and districts that are larger will be looking at additional support. So we anticipate minimally a full-time employee to support our work with contact tracing, and may have extra as well. So we're grateful for that. In addition, purchases have included personal protective equipment. Thanks to a state allocation, our students will receive two reusable masks as well as some other equipment supplies such as thermometers, temporal scanning thermometers. Again, that was coordinated by the state, so we didn't have to buy for a deal. It was a large bulk purchase on behalf of all the school districts, so we appreciated that. And then additionally, we have PPE for all of our staff. Not only two reusable masks, but there's a variety of PPE that might be needed, dependent on rules, and we are committed to making sure all of our staff have what they need to do their job safely. We've also installed protective barriers for high-traffic or collaborative spaces, including some tables, so when you walk into offices, you'll see those physical barriers that are clear plastic. Some people refer to them as plexiglass. They aren't branded, necessarily that, but you'll see those physical barriers in those high-traffic areas. Some of our tables, if more than one student would be sitting in it, they'll have that physical barrier as well. We have handwashing or sanitizing stations in each room. We've switched from a shared water fountain to bottle fillers. And again, you heard me celebrating that one-to-one access for our K-12, but we also have additional hotspots to support access for home learning should our students and family need it. And then, again, a shout-out to our technology team and our staff who are working on their learning management platforms, whether it's Canvas or Google Classroom, just sharpening skills so that information is readily available, that instruction is solid, and that we're ready should we need to shift instructional models. So those are some of the few things that our staff have done thus far. Our survey results, so you'll see, and we have these posted as well. Out of the 6,000-plus possible respondents, we had approximately 4,500 individual responses, so meaning for our family, we asked them to declare for each individual child. So we had over 4,000. And what we did was we looked at to forecast about how many students would be looking at accessing a breakfast program. So you can see those numbers there. How many students would need to access a lunch program? And again, some of those things are more grab-and-go, making it so it's not communal serving, et cetera, but what does that look like so we can appropriately plan? Also, we're asking our families to opt into transportation this year, which is something a little different. We'll keep pushing on that. Not only did you have your past survey, we'll survey you again, and there's a postcard coming home. If technology isn't your thing and navigating it online, you can check that off, write on that postcard and just drop it off with us so we can make sure we have those transportation and instructional options set for you, and we'll assist you with that. Or you can call, again, that centralized enrollment, and we will help you navigate that and make sure you have it. That's allowing us to look at our transportation routing, making sure we're in attention to sizes of groups on a bus, any rerouting that we could do, and looking at what safety measures we need to put in place to keep everyone healthy. When we looked at instructional options, you can see that overwhelming people want to come back to some kind of in-person instruction, and we've foreshadowed that it will look different. Our classrooms will look different, our routines will look different, but looking at, you know, a safe start for our students and staff. So our families were most interested in that. You can see we had 482 expressed initial interest in our virtual academy. That continues to grow, and that would be full-time enrollment. And a hybrid option is if you were taking courses through the virtual academy program and some face-to-face, and you can see a large interest in doing some type of hybrid option. So again, noticing some of those numbers, not only did not all of our families respond, but then not all respondents answered each question. So if you look at it and try and add everything up, you might not be able to get to. And then we asked a question specifically about masks. However, that was pre-executive order, so it'll be interesting as we continue to navigate that as well. But we asked if masks were required for any portion of the school day, would you opt for virtual learning? And a little over 1,000 respondents said, you know what, if masks are required, then we would look at a virtual option. That could be for a myriad of reasons. As we kind of unpack what that looks like, they could be thinking of, I can't imagine my four-year-old wearing a mask. My child has sensory needs and can't tolerate that. We have a medical condition, and those are all pieces that we're working through right now. But again, we will re-survey our families, we'll send you a postcard reminder, we'll come calling for you, so you won't miss. I've had a couple frantic calls saying I missed it, and I'm just saying, it's okay. We were looking at preliminary numbers to help us start our planning. So just reach out, let us know what you're thinking if you missed that, and we'll make sure to be in attention to that planning. So we hear a lot of rumors. I took a call before I came over, and a dad was like, just, you know, be a MythBuster for me, and I heard kids have to go to their classroom and stay in their classroom all day, and they can't get out of their seat, and my child's a second grader, and how would that possibly work? Well, that's not going to work, and that's not what our day looks like. So we think about the physical space and how we can make that look a little different. So we still want our classrooms to be colorful, vibrant, but it might be different materials that do that. It might be more things on the walls versus plush pillows and things that are a little bit harder to sanitize. We've asked for people to take out nonessential items, sorry, and then, again, there might be flow of traffic that we're in attention to, so there could be some floor adhesives helping you to understand what six feet looks like, what physical distancing is. There'll be different safety signage throughout buildings to help reinforce new routines, help convey ideas like handwashing hygiene, physical distance, you know, what does it feel like or look like if you're not feeling well? And again, routines around hand sanitizers in those classrooms. Our teachers, again, we, when you look at arriving into a classroom, let's say in an elementary classroom, you come in, and we might still have a table, and it might have a divider in it, and kids would still be able to come to a table and work in a small group with a teacher with appropriate measures. They might sanitize that table before the next group comes over, those kinds of things. But it's certainly not an expectation that our kids would come and sit in one spot. And again, they'll be going to lunchrooms when we have appropriate space. They'll be going to play on the playground, have class outside if the weather's beautiful, use the recess equipment. One thing that we've also talked about is locker usage. I know my middle school and high school friends are going to be sad because that's, sharing lockers is fun, but we're going to ask for single use, and then we're going to schedule so that you're not all released at the same time, so you're elbow-to-elbow. So we're looking at all those places during a student's day that we can create distance and safety. So the other piece is, I get a lot of questions around, what if a student's sick? So we have nurses at our sites, they have additional layers of PPE, which would be the N95 mask, gloves, gloves, et cetera. They'll be monitoring for those symptoms, and after you're deployed to a health room, you would go to what we would call containment rooms, where if you need to be picked up, they've been screened, treated, and now they need to go home, they're going to a separate containment area so that we can disinfect that health room and then get students moved to a home environment as soon as possible. Any questions from the Board about anything we've covered? It's a lot to go through, and I'm more than happy as we go for you to ask questions. Tony?
Thank you for everything so far. I know this is a really challenging time, and I really appreciate how you're handling it. When is, do you know when the next survey is scheduled to go out?
If Tim's around, he could yell that date probably off the top of his head. It's not next week, but right after?
We have a declaration.
Declaration? Yeah. So it'll be deployed, and then they don't have to kind of formalize that until a couple of weeks. And we'll do it as we did now, we'll run those numbers of people who didn't respond and do some outreach, some calls, some targeted messaging as well. So the other piece is around keeping and maintaining a healthy environment, and that's in our cleaning and disinfection protocols. So we've increased our daily and weekly protocols. So it used to be, you know, that sometimes that second shift would come through kind of after the day. We will have people continuously cleaning all areas, especially shared areas, high-frequency touch areas throughout the building. We'll look at, sometimes we can schedule specifically, so let's say, you know, Mrs. Smith's classes, they're going to rotate through their bathroom break kind of thing, and then the custodians can come in and clean. So they'll be looking at discrete cleaning schedules at the site level, but in constant attention to high-touch areas. One thing that hurts all of our hearts as educators, it feels like we're taking a step back to, you know, desks and rows and facing the same way, and every kindergarten teacher everywhere is, no more sharing. So we really want to reinforce with kids that everything is an individual supply. We want to limit cross-sharing. If there are shared materials, we'd be sanitizing in between use. So again, some common spaces might be a lunchroom, where we have larger distancing in groups. We might have a longer, lengthier lunch period to accommodate that, and everything would be cleaned and sanitized. The other pieces are just really timely removal of students or staff. I told staff that our educators, no matter what your role is, you're an educator at heart in a school system, and they have a culture of commitment, and that is always, you know, they want to be here for kids, and sometimes they come when they're not feeling 100%, and we really need to reinforce with them, this means you too. So if you don't feel well at all in any way, we need everyone to stay home. So we'll be reinforcing that with our students and staff. Our nurses will be trained, our staff will be trained on how to recognize symptoms in the classroom. So often, you know, it's not uncommon to see a runny nose, but when is the runny nose a thing? And how do we train people so that we can move kids to health rooms and understand what's really going on? We'll be doing a lot of teaching and reteaching around hand hygiene, new routines, et cetera, encouraging kids, again, every time they enter a space or exit a space, to be sanitizing or washing hands. We are looking at building layouts, anything from entering that building or flow of traffic or reentry from the playground, just looking at that flow to, again, minimize bottlenecks, traffic, or contacts. And again, we might have to limit movement or follow a specific schedule. There's a couple campuses that are pretty tight with their space. I'm thinking of some of those rare elementaries where they, the cafeteria is the gym. So we've worked with our PE teachers around if we need a longer access period, what does that mean to their instruction and how we can navigate that together? It might be that, given the number of classes we have, your class gets to use, you know, the recess equipment four times during the week or three times, and then you have to play on these other spaces. So our site teams are really navigating all those decisions so that they're site-specific.
Yep. You might be getting to this later, but, so I'm going to start with a little story just to get to my question. I went to the, I had to done this appointment last week, and as I was leaving my, to go to the appointment, I had received a call from the office saying that they had just gotten word that someone who had been in their office the week before had tested positive, and therefore they had to cancel all the appointments and reschedule me. And I know that a lot of businesses, right now, we've had more time to figure out what it looks like when someone tests positive and things need to shut down or shuffle around. Do we have a plan for what happens when a student in a classroom or a teacher not only tests positive, but also what if, what if 20% of our staff becomes sick and can't come in? That, I mean, we're just preparing for a worst-case scenario-type situation, so I'm hoping to get information about those at some point.
Yep. We have a few slides around the what-if scenario.
Okay.
And we'll speak to staffing plans. I'll slide that right in then, and push on if I don't answer those questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. We know that some of our day-to-day routines need to look very different, and we, again, to make sure that we're not creating unnecessary contact, we would be close to nonessential visitors and any kind of visits. So, parents, that'll be hard, but when we look to reopen, if you need to drop something off, we'll have you do it in a vestibule so that we limit interactions. Because again, as Tony, you were alluding to, when someone comes into contact with a positive case, it ripples out. So we just want to really work to minimize our contacts. So we just want to really work to minimize our contacts. We'll be working on cohorts. And what I mean by that is, think elementary. So you had, and Mrs. Smith always sticks in my head, I don't know why. But, you know, when you're in Mrs. Smith's third-grade class, you kind of stayed together as a team all day. You were a cohort. It's when you get into those secondary schedules, middle school and up, that you might do some mixing. So they are looking at schedules. And we will be working as teams to try and see how we can cohort kids as much as possible, especially at those secondary. I know that there's some choice, but do we leave a cohort together and the teacher patches in virtually? Do we do some things while they're still on-site? We are looking at, again, with that air of minimizing the number of cross-contacts throughout their day. Again, we've talked about entrances, exits, flow of traffic. And then staffing, when you think about the staffing redeployment. So we do have contingency plans in place. If you look at any school schedule, we were doing some counts. Everyone's filling in their matrix of what they have. But you'd have assigned classroom teachers who are responsible and scheduled with kids. And then you have auxiliary staff. It might be a school psychologist that I talked about before. It could be some paraprofessional supports. It could be those pieces. There's also a dedicated building sub already in place at each school. And then we have access to teachers on-call for an additional substitute pool. We can redeploy that staff. So let's say we get a call-in day and all of a sudden, everyone feels sick. We can redeploy that team of 14-plus at our larger schools into classroom instruction. And that gives us, it's not ideal operations, but we can make that work for one or two days to get us through to what our next steps need to be. So again, it's not us having to all of a sudden in the morning make a call to a school going, oh, sorry, your class is now closed. Oh, sorry, this is now closed. There's alternate and contingency plans for kind of each phase of that. We also are supporting our paraprofessionals. Many of them have four-year college degrees and are eligible to earn a substitute license. So we are supporting our staff in receiving substitute licensing as well to continue to expand that pool of people who are right at that site, right at that school, instead of traveling people in from other places. So we talk about making sure you're healthy before you leave home. So there'll be some different screening opportunities at home. There's a couple key questions that have been developed for all of us to ask ourselves around, you know, how are you feeling? Did you have this? Have you traveled? Did you come into contact with someone? Do you have a pending test for COVID out there? These are all the pieces. And it's real simple. It's five questions. If you answer yes to these, you should stay home. If you answer yes to this, take your temperature and see and make sure. So there'll be some screening at home. We'll be monitoring illnesses. This is something we've always done through attendance reporting. But I'm not sure people realize, there's a secondary layer when you call your child in to be absent. We ask for the reason why. We're not just being nosy. It's because we've always had to monitor at this level for public health purposes. We need to know what the symptoms are if they are ill. So please make sure, parents, if it's just you're staying home that day because, be honest about that. If they are truly sick, then we're going to dig in a little bit deeper to ask what those symptoms are. It helps us have a dashboard for ourselves to see and monitor what's going on with our student absences, our staff absences, to determine, do I need to deploy additional cleaning? Do I see something emerging that I can really make some bold actions to stop? And then, again, we need to report into public health. At this time, Tanya had mentioned, is there a certain percentage? They have not declared that yet. We keep pushing that. Right now, in conversations, Children's Hospital would say 10%. In the past, Public Health would say around 20% you'd be looking at something. Again, it's really, that's one of those things, like I said, it's a little frustrating. You're always seeking that answer. But they talk about, what can you operate? What can you do? We'd want to make sure that we're providing instruction. I have access to lunch and that I have appropriate cleaning to keep that building clean and sanitized. So again, we're confident that in our contingency plan, we have supplementary staff to support that, but know that we'll have heightened monitoring around those pieces. And again, one of those things, and again, we should celebrate as a district. I've been part of other districts and certainly talking with friends as part of my networks. Be proud that we have nurses in our schools. That's not something that everyone has. So having that commitment and having that qualified staff is something to celebrate, especially in times like this. I lean on our professionals every single day in our plans, and I really appreciate them. So they have that training. They're connected to our public health so that they can support those needs at our health rooms, our clinics, and then, again, moving right into containment when we need to and pick up. Again, you're going to hear from us quite a bit leading into the school year. We need you to update those contacts because when we call you and we need you to pick up your child, we really mean it. So phone numbers for you, for your secondary emergency contacts, etc., are really critical at times like this. We just need everyone to be very heightened about making sure that we've got appropriate contact information, you're monitoring for symptoms, and not sending your child, if they're expressing to you that they don't feel good, err on the side of caution. The other piece is our nurses, our public health, etc., will be monitoring any kind of positive case and then supporting contact tracing. So contact tracing is when we go back and understand what those interactions were with someone who is a positive case or even monitoring, heightened monitoring for someone who might be displaying symptoms and is waiting for test results, etc. So that staff will deploy those. We've been working with public health. We have sample letters and what those messages look like. I know there was a moment of panic. I took a couple of calls when Public Health talked about schools doing contact tracing. We will not be shouldering that whole burden. But what that looks like is, I know your child's schedule. I can deploy very quickly with our communication system, a phone call, an email, a notification to you, much quicker than they can go through their means of contact tracing. So that's how we're supporting that work. And again, very pleased today with their commitment to assign specific supports from public health to our schools as a means to help us monitor and contact trace here. Any questions on some of those pieces? Sure, at this time, Public Health said to put our strategies and efforts into cleaning, sanitizing, and monitoring for symptoms. That temperature checks could be done at home. The issue around temperatures being an indicator is, especially with children, it doesn't always come with a fever. So we could be falsely relying on that. So at this time, we wouldn't have automatic temporal screening before a child gets on a bus or into our schools. We'd ask that that's part of that strategy at home at this time. So again, we'll see. I know that on our call with Public Health today, they went from 40 cases a day locally to 90 and then seeing 80 over the weekend. So again, things can change. They can get tighter as we go, just so that we're all doing our part to control and mitigate. So at this time, right now, that's not a recommendation from them. So when there's a positive case, what happens? So someone would go get tested. We might be making that recommendation for them to go get tested. They might have experienced symptoms. So whether it's a staff member or a student, we would receive confirmation about a positive case for either a student in our district or a staff member who works there. And then, close contacts will be notified as soon as possible and begin self-quarantining for 14 days. Yes?
Would we ever have, or is the Health Department talking to you about possibly providing COVID testing at the schools?
So we have had conversations around that. They aren't to that point yet, but they had identified us as having that potential. So we continue to engage in that conversation, but nothing's solidified. So again, right now, they're talking about a 14-day quarantine. And then, close contacts, that's when we go back and we do the contact tracing. What does the student's schedule look like? What did, you know, their path look like through the school? Is it, you know, and again, I think people think too around close contact, but we were six feet apart, I had a mask on. Well, a close contact is around, were you in the same room in a closed space for more than 15 minutes, even with those measures? And what does that look like? So right now, that is a 14-day quarantine. But again, as we look at any kind of potential to go to a distance learning environment, if that were the case, let's say I had an entire class who needed to quarantine. We have document cameras, we have web cameras, we have different things that, again, hopefully that the majority of those in quarantine are asymptomatic, feeling healthy, and can still go on about learning, just perhaps in a different environment. And we're ready to do that. I've also asked, one of the things that was intriguing to me from European countries was that they quarantined on-site. So I have asked that question to determine if we would be allowed to do that. And what that means is, so let's say I had a third-grade class that we would, you know, they've experienced positive cases, people were in close contact. They should be quarantining for 14 days. So in some schools, what they did was, they quarantined that class. They staggered their entry, their start, their leaving. And then that's when they did stay in that classroom and lunch was delivered. Or they went for four hours and got their core learning taken care of. So I have asked that question around what we can do if that were to be the case. Because again, we're very cognizant that our families have different access to be able to do that. We have many essential workers who don't have that opportunity to all of a sudden be home in a day's notice. So again, we're just looking at every opportunity. We're working with those partners who currently provide before and after-school care. What opportunity might they have? I had some families express, again, hey, we'd like to do virtual learning, but I can't do it at home. Could some of those partners create kind of those little hubs for us? So again, we'll explore multiple opportunities to meet families' needs.
If I could ask, if I could ask you a question. So on the contact tracing, and I think you addressed this earlier, if that becomes necessary, is that something that's done exclusively by Public Health? By school staff? Is it a partnership? Could you explain that?
Sure, it is actually a partnership. So they would be notifying us of public, you know, Public Health would of confirmed cases. Most of our families or our staff would also call and self-report and just say, hey, heads up, so that we could respond. But again, we'd also be cross-notifying each other so that we're in the loop. And we would be actually working together. Like I said, right now, we've got the means to do a rapid communication. But let's say we needed extra support. They're looking at hiring what they need. So if we needed help, but we're also, in addition to our nurses, while they might take point on those pieces, we're looking at our support staff and what is our next layer to support our nurses? And if they're directing, okay, great, I need this letter. Because, you know, we can put out those sample letters. I need this letter to go out to this group. This call needs to go out to this. So that they can simply direct and follow those protocols. And many of us can support with those pieces. So it would be absolutely a collaborative effort. And again, a matter of public health is when, I think sometimes people worry about that sharing of information with each other, two entities sharing information. Because it's a matter of public health, that is shareable information. So we would be disclosing that to each other, just in case people are wondering. I think the big burning question and the thing that makes people really wary is around distance learning. So while we have an in-person environment, we have a full virtual environment. We have a mix of those classes, if you want. There may come a time, I always say, it's not if, it's when, that we need to go to distance learning again, whether it's a classroom, you know, a couple grades, perhaps a school. We are preparing for all of those scenarios. So what makes distance learning this year different from what we all experienced last year? Well, last year, it was a hard pivot inside of 24 to 48 hours. And this year, we've got months of planning that we've been taking advantage of. So we've got increased technology access for our students and our staff. We've been engaging in professional development on those learning platforms, on optimal instruction practices in a virtual environment. Our partner, Edmentum, can do training and certification for virtual teachers. Again, I think when everyone did that step out, people were navigating so many things at once. Sometimes it could be focused on academics and, okay, what am I teaching now and all these pieces? And we had relationships with those kids. We had a gift of time in that we had two-thirds of that year under our belt. We knew our kids, we knew our families, they knew us as educators. I think that in this time, we really need to hit the ground running on developing relationships and working on those social, emotional aspects with kids so we can lean on those again. And then we have to consistently be working on those if we were to go to a distance learning environment. And I think, too, you saw in emergency distance learning, everyone was just trying to figure everything out. Some of our families, they weren't home with their kids, they weren't able to be. Some still didn't have access. So we've overcome some of those barriers. And then we can move into that next layer of service. So a lot of services, whether it's a student needing 504 accommodations, English language learner supports, perhaps a special education service. People have been working in, again, those professional networks of, how do you deliver that virtually? What does that look like? And they're really networking and collaborating around shared lessons and ideas across not just our district, but all districts. When everyone kind of faced this in the nation, it took down the walls of ownership and just a lot of kind of crowdsourcing amazing ideas that we could leverage with kids. So a lot of creativity from staff, from families, from kids themselves. So we would be looking at what those services are, the instructional model, and the access as being different. And two, we would want to look at what kind of leverage we can get to give you some warning or what kind of secondary options you have. So maybe distance learning isn't that I have to go home necessarily. Maybe distance learning is, like I said, we found a community partner who can host a site. So we can maybe have kids who had to go home, but they're with a small group to receive distance learning instruction. So those are the kind of opportunities that we are seeking to support our families. Because the reality of everyone kind of being able to be within home and just with their parent isn't a reality for all. And we want to be respectful of that and make sure we plan for it accordingly. Any questions on those pieces? So again, still under discussion, today we had countywide discussion with superintendents and our county representative regarding those specific metrics for closure. So if we're going to be held accountable in any way, we want to know that like yesterday, like everyone else. But again, you hear numbers like 10 to 20%. Our Public Health would talk about, what is your capacity to do those things? Like I said, provide instruction, to provide lunch, to provide critical service, like making sure we are cleaning and sanitizing. Also under discussion is face covering. So with that new executive order, just what does that mean for little kids? What does that mean for students who might have sensory issues, medical needs, etc.? What does that really look like in a child's day? So that we can fully articulate that for families. Because as we know through the survey, for some families, that means that they would shift what they want to select for their instructional option. And we would respect that. So we want to just clearly say, yep, it looks like for, you know, on the bus in, you need to ride. And when four-year-olds come to 4K, this is what that looks like. Or here's what this looks like over there. And work with our individual families, because there are individual needs for those. So we would just have people really reach out to us. In our next communications, we encourage families, if they have any concerns about face coverings for any reason, physical, emotional, medical, any of those pieces, to contact directly with our district nurse so she can help navigate those conversations. And for many, it's just a matter of a new routine. And it's amazing sometimes how resilient kids can be. Start practicing now when you go out. Start practicing a little bit at home because it's a matter of routine. So we'll make sure and articulate that. Again, we're working countywide, superintendents, to get creative and think about that and make sure it's articulated for our families so that they can make the best decision that fits in with their family's needs. We're also talking about, as I said, in foreshadowed quarantine. Where does that have to be? And if it's a group, what are our opportunities? And can we have community partners? Could we do it in sites, etc.? And then there's also discussion regarding who is part of a critical workforce and identifying your staff, who is critical. So these are kind of some of the pieces that you see emerging as discussion in the county and for boards, for districts, as we frame our recommendations. So any questions, any thoughts thus far around where we're headed, our plans?
I have a lot of questions.
I'm here, go for it.
Let me go back to Edmentum. And we had 482 students interested, another 850 in a hybrid type of option. Is it, is there a scenario where we can't afford Edmentum? Edmentum costs, in addition... Edmentum costs in additional 2,500 to 3,000, depending on your age or grade level. Is it possible that we have so many kids interested in it that we simply can't afford to pay for it?
The other piece to think of is that that's for full-time enrollment. You see the majority of our students are looking for some type of prorated, so their interest could be A-class in those pieces. What we can do is work with our business office, Andy, and look at that, is there a break even? What I can't afford is to write a check to another district because I failed to provide a virtual environment, and that's what we're doing right now.
Yep, good point.
I've reached out to over 100 families who had already opted out of our district because other districts offered that. And so when you look at that, balancing each other, but I can run you some numbers and bring those forward for you.
If we can recapture those students, that is a huge financial benefit to come back to our district for a virtual program that they're getting elsewhere. I completely agree with you.
Absolutely. So even if you aren't currently enrolled in our schools, you hear from me because I have that list of families and you bet I've reached out and said, hey, did you know that we have this? A lot of our families are really excited, they might have participated in a virtual environment before with another district, but you're technically then enrolled in another district. What enrolling with us means, you're part of that neighborhood school, you have that sense of community, and you have access to some of those other courses or small groups or events that maybe you didn't have before. So a lot of families, again, I reached out to families already and a lot of them were like, talk to me more about that. We really liked that because we felt far away. Even though you're virtual, you can still feel like you're right here and part of your community in that. And I think that's part of the appeal as to what we're offering, is that kids could easily feel disconnected in a virtual environment and this was helping them feel connected with their community. I thought you had a lot more.
So a lot of the questions we get as board members through our emails or conversations are those what-if scenarios. So, and I hate to throw these at you, Superintendent, but what if a teacher gets tested positive? You're going to go home and quarantine for 14 days, does that mean we shut the whole school down? What if that teacher was in the teacher's lounge with 15 other teachers? Do they all have to quarantine for 14 days? Are those teachers going to get paid while they're at home quarantined for 14 days? Do we have enough subs to cover those teachers who are home quarantining? You see what I'm getting at?
Are you saying questions snowball? They certainly do. So let's go through that what-if scenario. So first thing, we have internal documents around mitigating exposure for our staff as well. You wouldn't see 15 people in a staff lounge. We laugh because we almost say we should be wearing timers and we will look at each other and talk to each other from the edges of offices with that, and it's like, under 15 minutes, go. And really being mindful of those contacts. We now can meet virtually, there's no need. It feels weird sometimes, especially if you're, we will literally be in offices next to each other and having a virtual meeting. But that's what we're doing to make sure we're not taking each other out if something were to happen. So we'll be working through that with staff, no large gatherings, no, you know, crossing that way. But when you look at closure scenarios, right now, it might just be that class that would have that close contact, so I can keep it at that. It's not an automatic shutdown of an entire school immediately. And again, we're looking for opportunities, even if I had to slide a class into quarantine, what does that really look like and what can I continue to do as far as learning goes? When you think about the staffing ratios, I alluded to those, but we are running those numbers to determine what percentage of our workforce could we lose in food service because they're at home quarantining? What percentage of our staff can we operate with for cleaning? So we're running all of those numbers so we know what that threshold is and we'd be sounding an alarm before we hit threshold. So those are all the pieces. So as you said, it's kind of every scenario that you might think of, I hope is on the 40-plus pages because we've been thinking about it as well. But we just encourage our families, you know, if you're thinking of those questions, reach out to me because if there's one out there that we didn't catch, boy, I certainly want to be thinking about it. Or an opportunity that you're thinking of as a family that maybe we haven't, or a connection. I had some people call me like, hey, did you know about this organization? They might be willing to host a small group, so if you patched us in virtually, we could meet here. I'm like, give me some numbers, give me some contacts, we'll do that. But we kind of go all the way through worst-case scenario, but it doesn't start with immediate full-scale school closure. That helps you.
I know your plan talks a little bit about busing. Can you touch on that a little bit? Do you think that we need to add bus routes? Are we going to be paying more for busing because of social distancing measures? Are we going to increase the walk route to schools and provide less busing? Can you touch on that a little bit?
I'm sorry, just wait. Before you go there, I wanted to go back to the student questions. So if we have a classroom of 22 kids, oh, 15, whatever, I don't care what the number is, and we have one student that tests positive, explain to me if none of the other students in that course are exhibiting any symptoms whatsoever? Like obviously, everyone feels fine, we've got nothing going on. What's our scenario then?
Right now, we'd be advised for a recommended 14-day quarantine. That's what I'm pushing around is what does that look like? Can it be onsite, asymptomatic, heavily monitored? Could we do some mitigating measures and continue to serve in a capacity? Could their step-up be different? Maybe five days to look for symptoms, et cetera? So we're seeking clarity on that to try and minimize.
And if a student tests positive from a privacy perspective, what's the contact tracing and are we telling the students in that class or at the high school?
Yeah. So good question. So when you talk about HIPAA and all those, while we're cross-sharing organizational information, that's not something that our families would be privy to. So the letters are generalized, so let's say there was a classroom situation, it would be that there's been a positive case in your class. We would not identify, you know, who that was. Some people might disclose that, they might know that, but that's their personal choice. We would not disclose that.
Sorry, Joel.
Back to busing. All right.
I hear an echo, so I didn't quite hear the question, but maybe as we ask questions, if you don't mind repeating them, yeah?
So he was asking around if there was a positive case, what does that notification really look like?
Gotcha, yep.
So we were talking about HIPAA and it would just be that there's been a positive case and that you've been considered a contact. It wouldn't say, you know, Joel Hanger came up positive and you guys saw each other on Tuesday at 3:00, that kind of thing.
Gotcha.
It wouldn't be like that. Busing. So right now, in working on busing, again, we're asking people to opt in to transportation. Many of our families are choosing if they have the ability to do pickup and drop-off and we're preparing for that at sites. That's probably sometimes, I know that your least favorite part as parents, because lines can get long, it can get congested, but we're working on that. We've already foreshadowed to sites, plan for double the amount of traffic because we want families to be able to do that. It helps us, it helps those who really do need to ride the bus. So we're asking people to opt in and seeing a decrease in ridership there. So then we'd look at the routing and what can we do to navigate numbers of routes? Families can sit together, we'll have assigned seats, they'll be loaded as they come onto the bus so they're not all walking by each other. So there'll be a lot of measures. I would anticipate full mask use during your full bus ride to school. And then again, they would exit that bus in that order so that they're not crossing each other in aisles, et cetera. So it's really minimizing those contacts. We'll look at ride times, things like that. Right now, we have a three-tier busing system, meaning the different schools go at different times. To add a route would be an additional cost. But again, we're looking at all the measures we can take prior. There are some scenarios in which some subdivisions have a very close walking and they never had, we'll communicate with them around the potential to become a walking zone, but we weren't looking at anything large scale at this point because they've talked about mitigating measures that you can take to create a safer ride.
Can I continue on the busing question?
Sure.
I've had children on middle school buses and it's free-for-all in there. I'm wondering who's in charge of enforcing the assigned seats? Is that a school district thing? Is that a busing thing? How is that going to work?
So it's both generally. So a driver, we would help assign seats and it would be by, again, as they're entering a line with their route. That would be an expectation. Students who do not abide by that expectation, those bus drivers are communicating and it goes to principals and staff to follow up with. That's just an expectation and we can't be cavalier around someone's health and make them feel that we're not doing what we can to help them stay healthy. So that would be an expectation.
Superintendent, shifting back to the virtual conversation, specifically the Edmentum, great news to hear the feedback from the families who have enrolled out. What is their timeline on kind of a go-no-go that, yes, I've decided I'm bringing my child back to the Westbin Virtual Offering rather than whatever district they might be in?
You can start the night before if you'd like. So I know that it's really hard decisions. We want that information sooner rather than later, but if you contact me the week before and just say, you know what, we need to really look, we'll work with you to make that happen. So again, take a look, there's videos of our meetings, there's staff, there's a website specifically around our virtual academy and options. Reach out to us now. For many people, it's just a couple clarifying questions. We're pretty knowledgeable about other programs in area districts or other vendors, so we can talk about what the nuances, the differences are to help you with that decision-making process, to make sure you have the information you need. So I guess I would just really encourage families to reach out sooner rather than later. Don't think you're bothering us. Sometimes I get that, oh, I know you're busy. It's like, no, we'd rather hear from you to help you navigate sooner rather than later. Because again, that's a really big transition for a family, switching schools. Sometimes you might think it's not because it's a virtual environment, but it's like you're changing schools and you want to make sure that students are prepared for a transition as well as you as a family.
Thank you.
Superintendent, obviously, the governor issued an emergency order with a mandate on wearing face masks. Is the face mask mandate something we intend to enforce in the schools? If a sixth grader or ninth grader or 12th grader comes in without a mask, are we going to question them if they meet one of those 20 exemptions? Or are we going to deploy our school resource officers to address the fact that they're not wearing a mask? Where does the district stand on enforcing the mask mandate?
So again, it goes with Erin's question around kind of how do you reinforce expectations with kids, right? And that would be our responsibility as a school, but it's everyone's responsibility in this case. It's making sure it's, do we need reteaching? Is it an open defiance piece? Is it all of those? What we don't want to do is force our staff to be just monitoring whether people are wearing masks. First and foremost, if there's an underlying health condition or need, we would be privately communicating that with the staff who would be engaged with that student so that they're not feeling singled out or that they're constantly being questioned. We would make sure that that was known so that that student can feel comfortable and isn't a situation where they're not feeling singled out. So that would alleviate that piece. The other piece is, yep, are you going to have some kids who aren't feeling it that day? Or maybe they forgot it? We will have additional masks on-site, maybe it's a forgotten thing. But again, you know, that's part of our new routines. It sometimes takes reminders, corrections. We would be looking at, again, it's an expectation to be in this class, to have your mask on. And if not, you can go to this class over here and someone will talk to you about your choices or why you're feeling that. Again, I think this is where the addition of a dedicated school psychologist, our counselors, all those staff, what can look like defiance out of a child, an adolescent child, what looks like that can be burgeoning anxiety. We want to make sure that our staff are trained in recognizing that, our families are trained in recognizing that, because that's what we could be seeing and it looks like behavior. So we really want to make sure and not make assumptions and work with all of our students. And I'm not saying there aren't going to be cases where some corrections are needed and we would deal with that, just as we do for repeated cell phone violators or things of that nature. And then it might be coming to a case where we really need to sit down with the family. This maybe isn't an environment match, they're really struggling and what other options do we have? So it would be that whole continuum.
Thank you.
Can I just touch a little more on the distance learning? So not the virtual academy?
Yep.
The chance that, I mean, we saw on that survey that a large percentage of our community really wants in-person learning, but then being realistic that a class or a school may have to take it to a distance learning for some period of time. In the beginning of the school year, when it's, teachers are talking about their expectations and their syllabus and get to know you, is get to know your technology going to be included as part of that? And then also for the staff, having those pieces coming into school?
Absolutely. And not just for our students, but also our families at home and navigating and making sure that you have access to kind of your tech support here back at school so that we can help you navigate those. So it could be some kind of help desk, it could be call-in pieces. But again, there needs to be some pre-training, some accessible pieces. I know technology is kind of building out those as well and also teaching our frontline staff to troubleshoot in different ways, but we want to make sure that's available for our students and families at home too. And again, I think in distance learning, you heard some people like, you know, we closed. Well, if we didn't close, we're behind the scenes doing a whole bunch of things, we just might not be in the place that you're used to seeing. So we're still here, we're still here to support you. You might have different questions in different scenarios, but reach out, we're here to help So again, those are the biggest pieces of discussion that are still in front of us to keep you advised of as a board. Again, as you have always done as a board, giving sound feedback, clear direction for us with that focus on a continuum of options and navigating all those pieces that are in front of us. So we appreciate that support. Toni, you have a question?
I know there's a hybrid option with Edmentum, the virtual academy, as far as supplementing courses or doing core courses online, for example. Based on the results of the survey, I suspect that some people that selected the hybrid option and reading the comments are thinking that maybe we're going to do some sort of rotation of days. Or I guess, could you talk a little bit more about the development of what in-person looks like as a hybrid or?
Absolutely. So if you're thinking about traditional in-person education, we're following our established district calendar and looking at five days a week. Again, when we monitor public health, health within our schools, et cetera, when we talk about worst-case scenario planning, we don't want to step all the way away, but is it possible for us to have alternate schedules in kind of our back pocket? Absolutely, we're going to be prepared for that. We want you to have an in-person experience if we have to go down to smaller hours, et cetera. But again, our intent is to be opening schools five days a week with schedules, just really looking at those pieces. But again, I say there's a lot of runway in front of us and a lot of things happening in the community and we're watching it very closely. We don't want to make a decision that is forcing us to open and shut because we did something false. So again, we'll have in our contingency plans, some things in our back pockets. When you talk about kind of helping people make a hybrid decision, it's only then when they see those schedules in front of them around, let's say it's an elementary student, okay, we have art, it's art, they love their art teacher, it's an elementary student, they want to be here for art, but the rest, we're going to take virtually, what does that look like? Does that fit? So it's when principals have those schedules kind of finalized, you can really see where those opportunities are within the schedule. And they're working really hard on that with their teams and have kind of drafts in progress. But we know that that's what people kind of really want to get their hands on and they're racing to the finish line to make that happen. But that will help you in those hybrid situations because maybe it's, I'm available to be able to drive my child to school on Mondays and Wednesdays, what's there? So maybe it's driven by what opportunity you have in the family to make that work, it's driven by a course selection, it could be driven by a multiple things.
So is it going to be more by building or by age level or grade level?
Yeah, we would be able to tailor that. So let's say it's a, you know, a student at Green Tree and, you know, they, again, it's all about the relationships and connections. Students and families want to come back to school because they love their schools and that's a great place to be. So they might be seeking their neighborhood school to have some interaction with the peers that they know, the teachers that they've come to love, that kind of thing. Or it could be an exciting new course offered at the secondary level and they want to add that in, and that's wonderful too. So we want to make sure, that's why we want to make sure those neighbors... So we want to make sure, that's why we want to make sure those neighborhood schedules are available, to help them with that decision-making.
With regard to distance learning, I think when we were forced into this back in March, one of the lessons we and many other districts learned is that not every student had access to the internet. And earlier in your presentation, you talked about hotspots, talked about a Chromebook for everyone. What do you think is maybe different between then and now, as it relates to, do we have confidence, I guess, that students will have access to the internet if they need to for distance learning?
So there's a secondary layer. You saw partners step up and provide free service as well during critical times. So that was helpful, as well as understanding that need, that really highlighted, we got to know who those families were, what their needs were, and a lot of those, we've been able to meet with the addition of devices, et cetera. Then the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, also through our technology directors, has a set of supplementary questions that will be going out to families, just right around access and those pieces. When we talk about advocacy with our representatives, and things that we need to help us successfully provide a continuum of options, those are one of the infrastructure things that we talk about, being something that we worry about and need support in helping provide for our families, not just in our district, but in every district. So again, there'll be another supplementary set of questions, specifically around access, so that we can work with individual families and be prepared ahead of time. I think in that emergency situation, it was reactionary, versus, as I said, a lot of runway in front of us before we actually start.
Other questions?
I just have a comment. I wanted to-
Microphone, Kurt.
Thank the 1,500-plus comments on all the surveys, passionate comments about all different topics, and just want to just even state for everyone listening and everyone that has commented, the superintendent really talks to everyone that has a question, and the staff behind, the Chromebooks coming in, distant learning being thought of, yes, a lot of comments, it didn't go as well as it could have, but that's a 24-hour thing. And so I'm glad you touched on today, the difference between the distant learning then and now, and families that are listening, give it a shot. We are working hard. I think there's four of you and four of all of our staff that have been around the community and listening and talking, so I just want to commend the staff for the job they've done and the job you've done.
Thank you. I will pass along those compliments, and sincere in living through our growing pains and learning from them, so that we can continue to grow as an organization, because again, we want to make sure we're well-prepared. As you said, feel free to reach out, we're accessible, we're here, we're doing some virtual sessions. One thing that I really want to note for our families, we're doing virtual sessions for our staff members, but we also have some upcoming sessions. I'll just highlight for families, on the fourth, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., on the fifth, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., on the eighth, which is Saturday, 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. Those are sessions we ask you to preregister, because what's a little different, sometimes you see presentations where we're standing and delivering, and the plan's chiseled in stone, but things are evolving so quickly, we chose to really work with the whole community, our families, our students, our staff, to create a really strong plan, because we know that even though we've done a lot of heavy lifting, there's a lot of great ideas out there that we want to capture. So in our sessions, you'd have an overview, we'll start pushing the other layers of our planning documents for people to have access to, and kind of go shopping for hot topics that they're interested in. But then also after those presentation pieces, you'll actually go into breakout rooms and be in a tabletop conversation, where you can ask questions, share feedback. Because as Kurt was saying, we really do put all that feedback back in front of, if it's all staff, that's transparent, we're sharing. Our families will synthesize our comments, while the board's read through, we need to pull out identifying factors, student names, and we'll push that out to families. What are people thinking right now? What are ideas are out there? And we'll continue to cultivate that work, so we have strong plans.
Any other questions?
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thanks.
Very good.
Thank you very much. All right. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is an action item, and that is review of the at-risk plan, and I believe Sharon Kales will present to us. Sharon?
Good evening. I am here along with one of my colleagues, Janet Hathley, who is the at-risk coordinator at the high school, and she will be available for questions after we're completed. The at-risk plan is really your plan, so it's like I did your homework for you. So if you have questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Anytime, Joel. We are here knowing that every child can learn, and sometimes there are factors that surface with our kids that we need to address. When we talk about the at-risk plan, it is a yearly plan, and it is dedicated to our kids from kindergarten through 12th grade. Sorry about that. I have a touchscreen that doesn't. So when we talk about the plan, one of the things is really engaging our families and our students if they are struggling in school. What I have found out is, when I'm writing this plan, what we need to do with our kids really mirrors what we do in our multi-tiered systems of support that we provide for kids. I'm actually going to take this off, I'm struggling a little bit there. Our multi-tiered systems of support has to do with our RTI program, where we talk about interventions in the areas of reading and math. And part of that is, like I said, engaging our families. Currently, teachers identify their kids at the high school. I'll get into the criteria, but part of it is working with the families. Previously, we had just sent letters out to families, and what we're going to be working on this year is really having all those people in one place to make some of those decisions about programming for our kiddos. When we get down to the areas of disability, let me get down here. At the high school, there's some specific items that we look at, and one of those is one or more years behind their age group in the number of credits that they have earned, or if they are two or more years behind their age group in basic skills. We also look at truancy with our kiddos, and we start that in kindergarten, which I'll get into answering some of those questions. But a truant student, we start looking at, that is five or more days on which the kids are absent per semester. So our school counselors really leave that out, and when you're looking at attendance, they do some early intervention with contacting families, and trying to get to the area of concern. Any one of our kids who is a school-aged parent, whether they're female or male, identifies them as potential. We look at our adjudicated delinquents, and we get that information weekly from the police department about which students are struggling within our community. We also look at our eighth-grade students who did not do well on the state assessment. Now, this year's going to be a little tricky, because the kids didn't take that assessment. But those are the criteria that are defined by DPI. When we look at early childhood through K-8, we start with looking at attendance, and like I said, even our early years and looking at kindergartens. There's also a system called a DOO system, it is from the DPI. It's a dropout early warning system, which starts at grade six, and that takes into account attendance and performance on state assessments. So given that information, this is tier one, so this is available to any of our students. So again, currently, tier one means kids are brought to site teams if their kids are performing poorly on an assessment, or if their attendance is not what it should be. So what we're going to do is really look at, current systems are in place, and identify those as part of our at-risk program, rather than asking teachers to do a different system. We're going to try to blend the two together. The other thing that, and I'll have Janet talk a little bit more about that, at the high school, every week, she meets with every counselor and administrator to look at the kids who might be at risk. So this includes their grades that they have, and again, like I talked about, their attendance. In order to be eligible for Janet's program, they have to meet two of those five criteria. One of the things we also look at is accommodations for kids. Our teachers naturally deliver accommodations, because they're good teachers. So we look at things regarding how the instruction is delivered, to whom it is delivered, and also if kids might need additional supports. Some of that might look like homebound education for our teenage parents, and also looking at community-based programs. We have a variety of programs that are available to our high school kids, some of them that you know about. We have reading classes at the high school, and math-supported study halls. We also have community-based job programs for our high school kids, and Janet monitors all of those kiddos. Again, here are some of the accommodations that teachers typically do, including, like I said, those community programs, and really, we're wanting to look at eliminating the barriers that exist for students in order to graduate from high school. The other thing that we do is we analyze the program every year. Again, this year, Janet and I will be working collaboratively to address the problems at the high school, and like I said, we're blending that in with our multi-tiered systems of support. So, any questions about your homework? Janet, can you tell them to speak to what happens at the high school? Why don't you go over there? I think Janet just wants to-
Oh, yell? I can yell. Should I take this off? Okay. Ooh, sorry. So at the high school, we identify the students based on the DPI recommendations, which is, includes the truancy, includes the credit deficiency, includes teenage parents, everything that we have listed. And then we have certain programs at the high school that we identify based on the student need, based on the barriers that the students have, that are preventing them from being successful in the high school at the time. And so it depends on the student, and they're each placed in the programs, or given the supports that they need, based on what that need is. So it's very individualized, very similar to special education, without the legal documentation and the legal paperwork at this point. But we do have plans for every single student, and every counselor has those plans in their records for each student, and it follows them. We review those plans every quarter, and then I meet with the admin and the counselors every week to discuss the list of students that are at risk, and the things that we want to put into place, and the long-term plans for those students. Any questions?
Are there any major changes from this year's at-risk plan versus previous years?
Really, we are documenting services that are currently in place, and I guess the difference really is blending the RTI, the multi-tiered systems of support that are in place. For example, we've gotten a lot more detail about literacy with Heidi in our system, and she's really clarified the intent of the meetings and what's discussed there. And the same criteria, we have to document for the at-risk program. So the processes are in place, now we're going back and filling in the documentation.
Great.
Other questions?
I move to approve the 2020-2021 Westbin School District at-Risk Plan.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2020-2021 Westbin School District at-Risk Plan. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, appreciate the presentation. All right. The next item on our agenda then is a board meeting calendar. So upcoming, we have a meeting in two weeks, August 17. Also will be located here, at the Westbin High School Silver Lining Arts Center. In September, we have a regular board meeting on the 14th, also here, and on September 28th, we have our annual meeting, also located here. Let's see. I don't have any other items for follow-up and communication, so is there any other business to come before the board at this time? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, everyone, this meeting is adjourned.